I'm going to call this meeting, special meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for January 27th, to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Commissioner Tesler.
President.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen is absent. Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Benardz.
Here.
Commissioner Clem.
Here.
Commissioner Hein is absent. And Chair Bennett.
Here. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move approval of the special meeting agenda of the Salem Housing Authority for January 27th, 2014.
Second.
Second by Benardz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Alrighty. Is there any public comment? No one has signed up to make public comment. Is there anyone that wanted to address the Housing Authority? Someday. Okay. Counselor Nanki, our action items.
I would move staff recommendation on Action Item 4A regarding Amendment Number Two to purchase and sale agreement for 4840 and 4846 Talisman Court cell.
Second.
Second by Benardz. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Seeing no further business, the Housing Authority is adjourned.
And if I would have been looking, Counselor, that Benardz could have actually made some motion.
Excuse me. Hey dude, watch your purse.
evening of Monday, January 27th, 2014. Would the recorder please open the meeting by calling the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
President.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Clausen is absent. Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benardz.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion regarding additions and deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda and to move Agenda Items 5A, B, and C to follow the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the additions and deletions and the modification of the agenda. Is there discussion?
I'm going to correct, if I may, Madam Mayor. I think... Let me look at this just for... Do I want to move it ahead of consent calendar?
I have five.
5A, B, and C to follow the consent calendar. Okay. Yeah, never mind, motion's fine.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We have a portion in our meeting where we have council and city manager comment. Counselors, are there counselors with comments this evening? Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the riparian restoration project that's been going on at Clark Creek. It's been done by the Friends of Trees, and I was unable to find anybody who was a friend of tree. I saw, I unfortunately could not go down there and join them the day they did it, but I went down there the other day and it just looks really, really nice. And they had a whole mob of people just go down there and really replant it. It looks beautiful. And another thing that they're really doing is they're going around and they're doing these door hangers for people, and they can put them on their door, and if they want a free street tree, they can get a free street tree in all kinds of different neighborhoods throughout the city. And they'll come and plant the tree and teach you how to take care of the tree, and their survival rate is pretty high for said street trees. So I was really wanting to give Friends of Trees a little gold star for their efforts in Salem because it looks really good, and I understand that they have a couple other projects planned. And I just, if anybody has time, stop by Clark Creek Park and look at the project because it looks really, really nice. And it used to be just a thicket of blackberries and just nastiness, and it's all been replanted, and it just, it really, it really looks good, so just a little heads up.
Wonderful. And the location for that park is approximately?
In back of my house. Just drive down Vista Avenue and you'll see a sign, "This is Clark Creek Park," and you can go in from there, or you can go down Ratliff, and there's a parking, a little parking area off Ratliff, and you can just pull in there and check it out.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you. Other counselors, their comments this evening? Do we have a comment from our city manager?
Not this evening, Mayor.
All right. Okay. Well, we're moving right along. We know we have some, some interesting and exciting things on the agenda tonight, and we certainly appreciate everyone's time here. The next thing is a proclamation that I'm very excited about. It has to do with the Salem Public Market's 70th anniversary. We have guests here from Salem Public Market, and I would ask their representative to come forward, and we're going to have a proclamation and a presentation. Oh, you may, you may come up here. Sorry. I didn't make that clear, did I? It's all right. It's okay. We've got time. We're all right. We generally tend to do this up here because then everybody can see you. So here you are at the front, and would you please introduce yourself?
My name is Teresa Knox, and I am the President of the Board of Directors for the Salem Public Market.
Wonderful, and I'm so glad to have you here with us this evening. So the proclamation is, whereas the Salem Public Market was established in 1943 to provide a public marketplace to sell local farm produce to the citizens of Salem, and whereas the Salem Public Market is the oldest continuous farmers' market in Oregon, and whereas the Salem Public Market provides locally-produced agricultural products such as fresh fruits and vegetables, meat, cheese, honey, artisan breads, baked goods, seasonal plants, and flowers, and whereas the Salem Public Market hosts an organic co-op with flour, popcorn, free-trade coffee, and other organic products... I'm getting hungry. I don't know about you, I'm getting hungry. Whereas the Salem Public Market supports local crafters of quilts, hand-blown glass, jewelry, candles, soaps, and crafts made from recycled items, and whereas the Salem Public Market supports the Salem nonprofit community by maintaining a year-round food donation barrel, designating books, signing donations, and providing gift baskets for annual fundraising events, and whereas the City of Salem supports the efforts of the Salem Public Market and recognizes their role in promoting local agricultural products and crafters in the Salem area. Now therefore, I, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim January 27th, 2014, as Salem Public Market Day, and I invite the entire Salem community to join me in recognizing and applauding the Salem Public Market for their contribution to local agriculture over the past 70 years, and I am declaring, as Mayor of Salem, that the entire month of February will be the Salem Public Market Month, and I encourage everyone to try to go and visit on a Saturday. It really is a place of community and a place of sharing and a place of warm appreciation for local products, and I certainly want to champion that as well. So I want to present this proclamation to you and to thank you and your Board of Directors for all of the work that you've been doing. So let's give her a round of applause. And I know that you have a plaque, and you have some guests here today with significant service to the Salem Public Market and to the community. So I'm going to let you introduce them, and I'll hold the plaque.
Well, thank you, Mayor Peterson, for recognizing the Salem Public Market. We really do appreciate the time that you have taken for the council meeting tonight to recognize us. In recognition of our markets, the Board discussed how can we recognize 70 years, and it's not just the Board of Directors or the people that are there trying to bring in the fresh and local food, but it's our vendors who help make that all possible. We have a plaque that we're going to install at the market, and it's for vendors with 20, that have been with the market or were with the market for 25 or more years. Those people's names are Hellman, McHalek, Beelenberg, Viet Goine, Dom, White, Lockhart, and Hunt. I would like to point out that Mrs. Hunt is here. Mrs. Hunt, could you please raise your hand? Hunt, yep. And Bruce? Okay? They're two of our vendors. And then Mrs. White, would you please raise your hand? She was with the market for 45 years. She retired a year ago this month from the market, so... We truly miss her baked pies and her, and her cookies. So again, thank you very much, Mayor.
It really is a pleasure. We're trying to stress so much in our community, the appreciation for local agricultural products, and your market really does typify that. So again, thanks for what you're doing, and remember everyone, February as the state of, the city, State of the Cities Month to honor Salem Public Market in February. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda tonight is public comment, and I assume that we do have people signed up for public comment, and I will get that from the city attorney momentarily. Thank you. All right. We do have several people who signed up, and just to help everybody do this, I think, as quickly as we can, everyone has, each person has three minutes. When the amber light comes on, it's the end of two minutes, and then at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. And I'll call a couple of names at a time and ask, maybe you can alternate at the podiums, and it will help to go this, get this a little quicker. All right. Bob Omar and Ryan Albritton, starting off.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, I am. Welcome.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Bob Omar. I reside at 2185 High Street Southeast here in Salem. I'm the Chair of the Salem Riverfront Carousel Board of Directors. Our board wishes to thank and commend both the Mountain West Corporation and the mayor and city staff for the development strategy that they jointly proposed to, for the former Boise Cascade 13-acre industrial site. The proposal, if approved by the council, will provide a win-win for all parties involved. The city's downtown area will receive a much-needed facelift. The riverfront park will be expanded and protected for future, from future traffic concerns, and the developer will be free to get underway with what should prove to be a highly successful project. We ask the council approval of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Omar? All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Ryan Albritton, followed by Casia Quillinen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My name is Ryan Albritton, and I am representing the Salem Chamber of Commerce as the President this year, located at 11110 Commercial Street Northeast. And we just want to voice our opinion and talk about the fact that we are a strong proponent for the redevelopment of the former Boise Cascade property. Very excited about this opportunity and, and more so for the impact of, the economic impact of the project being highlighted, highlighted with the creation of 190 ongoing jobs that are family wage, private sector, and 338 construction jobs and a significant expansion of downtown housing area. Very excited about that opportunity, and this, this opportunity being a momentum builder for the Salem community, not only for our local economy, but also the fact that we are the hub of the Mid Vallet Valley. We think that's going to be something very special through this project. We also want to, we'd be remiss if we didn't discuss, as Mr. Omar did, the public-private partnership that has taken place through the last several months and all the hard work that's gone into making this hopefully a reality as you consider this for your vote tonight. But we want to acknowledge all the hard work of city staff and the developer who came together to make this hopefully a reality. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Albritton? All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your testimony. Casia Quillinen, followed by David Engen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Casia Quillinen. I reside at 1145 14th Street Northeast. I'm here both on behalf of the Parks Board, of which I am a member, and also on my own behalf. Parks Board believes that this acquisition of the Parks Land will be in the best interests of all the citizens of Salem. You have the staff report before you. This project, the acquisition of the 3.8 acres, completes a long-held dream, nearly 50 years of dream, to create a continuous park along the riverfront, opening up new recreational possibilities and preserving and protecting the river's edge. This project, as just been stated, is a win for everyone, citizens and developers alike, and it's really rare that that occurs, so I think we should pop the cork and celebrate. We should be particularly proud of the fact that the city and the developers have been able to so quickly reach an agreement that will provide ongoing value to Salem citizens for many years and which has avoided serious unpleasantness and disastrous consequences for Riverfront Park. Some may have concerns that the city is going to pay too high a price for this chunk of park, or that once again, the city is giving away too much in tax breaks. The Parks Board has looked at the funding mechanisms for this entire project and has determined that at this time, the financing piece is appropriate. It is, of course, recognized that the financing piece is subject to change as more information becomes available, but at the present time, the current price of $2 million seems to be fair to the Parks Board. It certainly is fair compared to the value that all of us and our children and our grandchildren will receive for the enduring future. Can anyone just imagine what Salem would be like without Riverfront Park if we had not developed it? It is almost inconceivable, yet that almost happened several times. So let's not hamper ourselves by being too concerned at this point in time. In five years, no one will question the wisdom of going forward with this project. You cannot count priceless for Salem's livability. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Quillinen. Are there questions from counselors? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. And David Engen, followed by Mark Shipman, and then Hazel Patton.
Yes, Mayor and City Counselors, my name is David Engen, 1145 14th Street Northeast. It's nice to see you here on a cold and wet, thankfully, evening. I really support the acquisition of the Parks Property. I don't know much about how it's going to be financed. It's probably going to be bought by Parks SDCs, I assume, but I support it because that is going to be a wonderful addition to Riverfront Park. And I would like to talk about something else that happened to me fairly recently. I was driving south on Hoyt Street in the evening when it was getting dark. There are no lights in that long stretch of street, very few crossings, no marked crossings, and I always drive under the speed limit. I know I am because people, when they come up behind me, always turn their lights on. But anyway, this was after dark, and two ladies were crossing the street, not at a crossing, and they were mostly in dark clothes, and there were cars coming from the other direction with their lights on, and I did not see them until I got up really close to them because one of them had a white umbrella and the other one was wearing a white jacket. I came really close to hitting those two ladies, and that scared the hell out of me. I don't know if it scared them or not, but I can tell you, that is a dangerous, dangerous street. So I would, I would love it if somebody would go out there and take a look at it and say, "What do we need to do to make this safer for the people who live out there?" I should have brought this up to the transportation people, but I think if I tell you about this, you might be a little more impressed. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. I mean, when that sort of thing happens, it really makes you think, and I hope all of you think about that a little bit. Drive out there in the evening or when it's dark, and you'll see what I mean. It's really hard to see people if they're, they're not wearing white clothes or if they're not crossing at a crossing. Thank you very much.
And the name of the street again is?
Hoyt.
On Hoyt. All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and testifying about the park and letting us know about the traffic situation, too. Thank you.
And we will look into it.
Are there any questions from counselors, by the way? Nope? All right. Mr. Shipman, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, and members of the council. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mountain West Investment Corporation, speaking in support of Agenda Items 5A, B, and C. Jason Tokarski really wishes he was here this evening to deliver his message personally to you. Unfortunately, he's home with the flu, so I'm here. Hopefully, you received Jason's personal email today, personally thanking you. I'm here also to personally thank you for the collaborative and creative effort that the mayor, city manager, your legal counsel, and department heads have put into making these items in 5A, B, and C possible. Mountain West Investment Corporation sincerely appreciates the work done so far and is committed to work creatively and collaboratively with the city to make the redevelopment of the Boise Cascade property a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Shipman? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Hazel Patton, followed by Ron Steiner, and then Ron Sturba.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Hazel Patton. I live at 1363 Court Northeast, and I'll have to tell you, it's a lot more fun to stand up here and say I'm for something than against, and I am for this agreement and want to applaud you for working together to make it happen. I was down at the park yesterday. It was a beautiful sunny day, so I took my dog and we walked down there. The place was packed, and as I'm walking the dog by our fence area, people were stopping and looking over and saying, "Is this the spot? Isn't this wonderful? This is going to be part of our park." And that made me feel really, really good. Also, I'm so thrilled that there is going to be a staging area for the bridge so that that makes that less impact on our Riverfront Park, because let me tell you, folks, this park is really used and really loved. There were so many strollers, so many little kids there, that we're going to need a lot more park space in the future, real soon in the future. I know there's an issue with the tax part, and I thought about that for a while, and then I realized, I live in a historic district, I've gotten tax breaks, and it is an economic benefit. When you take the taxes off, or freeze them, in my case, because it was a state program, but it was property taxes that were frozen, the impact on our neighborhood when several of us got that wonderful benefit was amazing because people's property, when they saw that the, yours were being improved, they improved theirs, and it brought stability to that whole neighborhood. So I know it looks like it's hard at first, but no, no deal is a perfect deal, but really, folks, this is a good deal, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mrs. Patton? Thank you so much for coming down to testify this evening. Ron Steiner, followed by Ron Sturba.
Thank you. Mayor Peterson, members of the council, my name is Ron Steiner. I live at 596 Salem Heights Avenue in South Salem, and my wife Karen Ann Jackson and I would like to live downtown, and this project is an enhancement to that opportunity for those of us who want to live in the center of a vibrant city. Every great American city today and in the future is going to have vitality in its core, and this project, thanks to the stakeholders working so hard, is going to enhance that opportunity. So I want to thank all of you who are involved and look forward to that opportunity when we can move downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Steiner? All right. Thank you so much for coming to testify. And Ron Sturba.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor, and staff, and council members. My support for the LED streetlight update program that you have, I want you to understand, I like the technology of LED. I think it's important for our, our community to cut energy costs and also maintenance costs for our city. I'm all for that. And speaking with energy-efficient companies about LED lighting and communities, municipalities, what I've found with the program that is presently underway in Salem by PGE is to put in a LED streetlight, the problem with the streetlight is not the LED light, but the shield around it that does not restrict the glare. And so when you drive down the street, what you don't want to have in your eyes is the competition between the glare and the white spot or the light spot footprint on the pavement. It's the glare that needs to be taken care of. The East Salem District, Service District, it's off of Lancaster, Glendale Avenue has a different type of light fixture. It's made by Leo Tech, and it actually has the glare shield on it. It makes the light look beautiful in the neighborhood. The four corners, intersections are lit up. So at this time, I would say, I would like the City of Salem to public works, to work with me and sit down and take a look at a good light for our neighborhoods. Engineering-wise, I got all the stats. Perception-wise, as a citizens, there's a lot to be, I should say, requested out of that light fixture. So at this time, I would say, to have a citizen group pick a, a streetlight out that's conducive to all the neighborhoods because they change. We are not a flat-land city. We have hills, and that's where other problems that are coming up. And thank you very much, and I hope that we can put something together that makes lighting in a city more livable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Sturba? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down and testify. All right. That's the end of those who had signed up to testify. Is there anyone in the chambers that had wanted to sign up and was not able to for this segment of public comment, for anything that's on the agenda? Yes, would you like to go to the podium and please introduce yourself? Yes, would you like to go to the podium and please introduce yourself? And state your name and your address. And again, you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three, the red light comes on. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bill Charnholm, and I live at 1323 Chamekada. I moved here in 1973. And I'm an investor in this town also. And I just think that this offer that you have before you on the riverfront is an awesome deal. And not only would I like every council member to approve it, I think we ought to say that you would instruct staff to do everything you can to facilitate it. And I've looked at what the, I got a listing package on our city property and I got a listing package on the developer's property. When I looked at that, it comes in at about $6 a square foot on his property because he has these access and egress and ingress problems. Our property comes in at about $24 a square foot. If you run the numbers, it means the property we're getting to us is worth about $4 million. The property he has is roughly a million. It's a little less than that. So this deal means that he is going to, and I'm all for this, he is going to double his money because he's putting it on the table for $2 million. We, on the other hand, the day we get this property, the county's going to say it's the same property all down there, and it'll jump up to $4 million. So when you look at what it's really worth to the city and you're saying, and I know, Mayor, you've mentioned that, gee, what about taking it off the tax rolls? Well, if you talk to the mayor in Corvallis, he and I talked together on something like this when I was on the board of the Apartment Rental Association for the Mid Willamette Valley. And he's got a doctorate degree. And he said, well, when the city takes things off the roll, you have to add a little bit, you know, because you're losing that revenue stream. And what I said was, well, why don't you just amortize that stream? How much of the value of your property really has to do with the taxes that you pay? So if you had a mileage rate of about $25,000, that's 2.5 percent. Let's say you have interest rates at 10, that's a quarter of it. So if you make a picture of it, basically, you have a one-quarter mortgage on your property that you never get rid of. Well, if he's talking $4 million, you take a quarter off of that, which he has already done, there's your million. That takes care of all your taxes that you were going to lose. Now you've got another million sitting on the table that he's done. You go ahead and say, gee, we're going to defer taxes for 10 years. Well, there's $100,000 a year to cover that. He deserves to have this project go. Not only that, we really should tell staff to do everything you can to make it go. And I was strongly against it before, but he has, what he's put on the table is awesome. So.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from anyone on the council? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else that had come to testify for this segment, we will move now to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with one poll, 3.3B by Counselor Nanki.
3.3B, you say?
Yes.
Okay. Not 3.2?
A second?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, Madam.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, Madam Mayor, I'm also going to poll 3.3A for Counselor Tesler.
3.3A for Counselor Tesler?
Yes.
And 3.2B for Counselor Nanki?
3.3A and 3.3B.
Okay. Okay. Got it. Thank you. All right. Is there a second?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benares to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the two polls, 3.3B and 3.3...
I don't want to pull anything.
I'm sorry, you didn't pull anything?
No.
All right. Let's go back to the beginning.
I had questions earlier today, and they were answered.
All right, okay. All right. We do actually sometimes rehearse this. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move the consent calendar polling 3.3A by Tesler.
Thank you.
And a second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benares to move the action items, move the consent calendar, rather, with the exception of the poll of 3.3A by Counselor Tesler. Is there a discussion? Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. You'll do it later, okay? She'll call in your special orders.
Okay, I get a pass for that.
So, okay. Thank you.
Moving along.
All right, moving right along. All those in favor of the motion regarding the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're going to now move to the special orders of business so that we may address Items 5A, B, and C. And I believe we have, Counselor Clem, yes?
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Madam Mayor. I, per the Salem Revised Code, want to disclose that my new employer has a business relationship with Mountain West Investments.
Oh, okay.
And so, just recently hired. But because of that potential conflict of interest, I will be recusing myself with voting on Items 5A, B, and C.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And we do have a staff presentation beginning with Item 5A.
Do you have special orders in front of you?
Yeah, we're moving. It's three options. Okay.
(coughs)
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the council, I'm John Wales, the Director of Urban Development. And I'm here tonight to present the, this first staff report on the special order of business, that'd be 5.0. As I, whoops, I think I am. As, I think everybody's aware that over the past few months, the city and Mountain West Investment Corporation have had a series of conversations about trying to move the master plan forward and to put it in a framework that is implementable and allowing the development to proceed. In approaching this, we wanted to look at it holistically. We didn't want to look at one parcel versus another parcel, but look at the entire site. It's a very challenging site. It has a lot of complexities to it. And we wanted to make sure that we could solve for the whole, for the whole, for the whole property. In doing that, there were really three pillars of sideboards or stools, legs of the stool, if you could think of it that way, that we were concerned about. One is we wanted to take into consideration the community input that we receive from previous proposals. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that the developer's requirements and special concerns and constraints on this property were addressed. And thirdly, in developing a public-private partnership, we needed to address the city concerns and constraints as well. For those that are familiar with the property, it is 13, just under 13 acres. It's located on the, at a critical intersection on the corner of Trade Street, Trade and Front Street, Commercial Street to the east. On the west side is the Willamette Slough and Riverfront Park. The property is bisected by the Burlington Northern Railroad and going north and south, and by Pringle Creek that divides the property east and west. We've referred to in the past about the park parcel, which is the 3.8 acres that you've heard, referred to today, the north block, the south block, which is, still has the development that's, that's remaining from the Boise Cascade property. And then the Slough property down on the southwest corner. So what this has resulted in is a new, a new master plan for Pringle Square. Probably the most significant feature in the master plan or the change that you've seen is the park parcel. And it is what is being proposed is the acquisition of, for the city to purchase it. That will combine the property with the rest of Riverfront Park and become a development that will be developed over time just south of the carousel. The north block parcel, the proposal hasn't really changed since the earlier proposals. It still includes a, a post-rehab care facility at the, on the west side and a 40,000-square-foot office building on the corner. The south block, again, the property or the development is, is being considered, being proposed is mostly residential. The first phase, which is the darker yellow color, is, the developer's proposing about 115 apartments, including efficiency units for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. It also includes about 15,000 square feet of commercial space. The second phase of the development, which is the lighter area, is an additional 60 units, which will come a few years after the first phase is completed. The master plan also includes a connection between the north and the south blocks, a pedestrian trail that also, that connects the two urban developments, but also provides the opportunity for access between Riverfront Park and the, and the other trail system that the, that the city already has in place along Pringle Creek. The park, the purchase and sale agreement, which is on the, which is the first item on the agenda here tonight, really has two, two components to it and two purposes. The first purpose is that it authorizes the city staff to proceed with due diligence to obtain a prospective purchaser and sale, excuse me, prospective purchaser agreement from the Department of Environmental Quality and to then execute the actual transaction, the purchase of the site. The purchase and sale agreement also has another function, to lay out the roadmap. We call it the, the direction of the things that need to happen in order to develop the entire site. And really, this is a roadmap of the terms and conditions that the city has placed on this property, as well as the terms and conditions that the developer needs in order to develop the north and south blocks. So in the purchase and sale agreement, there are five actions that the city council and the Urban Renewal Agency will need to make in the coming months. The first is the purchase and sale agreement itself, which is what we're talking about now. The second is the approval of the multi-unit housing tax incentive program for both the phase and, the first phase and second phase of the south block. The city has received the application, and that will be the next item for, for the council to consider this evening. Third item is the determination of eligibility of Park SDCs to purchase the park parcel. Fourth item in the agreement, it says that we will need to approve, or the council will need to approve a binding agreement for the development, for the maintenance, the development and the maintenance of the connectivity improvements between the north and the south block over, over the creek area. So those are the four actions, primary actions that are identified in this roadmap for the city council. The Urban Renewal Agency Board will be, has one action that we'll need to consider before moving forward, and that is to approve a project bond for the north block development. And that, that is something that is, we're currently negotiating and having discussions with the, with the developer about. Each one of these, Items 1 through 5, is a separate action by the council. So tonight, we're doing the first three of those. We're doing the purchase and sale agreement, we're presenting the multiple-unit housing tax incentive program, and the eligibility for the park SDCs. Purchase and sale agreement is quite straightforward. It's proposing that the city purchase 3.8 acres of the Riverfront Park parcel at a price of $2 million, and we've heard some comments about that. This actually isn't the first time the city has been in negotiations to acquire the property. In fact, there have been several discussions over the years about, about the property. Back in 2010, we looked at a whole series of appraisals that were done. The developer's appraisal for that parcel was 5.7 million. The city's was 3.6 million. And a third-party independent opinion, a review, came in at 5.1 million. The city also asked the question, if the property were completely constrained without access and could only be used for park, what would that value be? That was just about $800,000. So, so our point is, the $2 million, we feel is a fair price for this, for this property. We think it's an opportunity to purchase and agree with what many of the comments that have been said tonight, as far as, one, moving the sale and enabling this property or the whole development to move forward, but also for the benefit to the community as far as taking this opportunity to acquire, to acquire it basically for generations to come. There are two conditions that, that we have in the purchase and sale agreement to acquire the park parcel. One is, I mentioned, the due diligence and to, and with our ability to receive a prospective purchaser's agreement from DEQ, we think that may, will take six to possibly nine months. And the second item that is also on the agenda for tonight is the successful funding with park SDCs. So with that, staff recommends the approval of the park parcel purchase and sale agreement with Minto View LLC for the acquisition of the 3-acre property adjacent to Riverfront Park. And with that, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there questions of councilors? Counselor Benares.
Thank you for giving such a good report. Can you tell me a little bit about mutually exclusive events? If, of the five points that we have to take care of, three of which we're looking at tonight, if any one of them doesn't go through what happens with the others?
Well, the purchase and sale agreement says these are the items that the city needs to have and requirements we need to have in order for us to purchase the park. The other ones are that the development requirements that the developer will need to purchase, to continue with the development on the south block and the north block. So if the council chooses to accept that, the development will be ready to proceed. If they don't, that, that would be questionable whether the developer would be ready to go forward.
Are there other questions from councilors for Mr. Wales? Yes, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wales, one of the factors that was included in determining that city appraisal was that the, sort of, the property is permanently constrained as a park. Is it permanently constrained as a park at this time?
Not at this time, no. There is still develop, access potential for, for access to occur onto that parcel.
So that, I, one of the, I think one of the concerns is that, you know, if, gosh, if it's only worth $800,000, why would you pay $2 million? In fact, that $800,000 is based on a condition that doesn't exist.
Today, it does not.
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any further questions by councilors? Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the staff recommendation to pursue the purchase and sale agreement with Mountain West LLC.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benares to move the staff recommendation for the purchase of the park parcel for the named $2.0 million. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Did you want to discuss? Were you going to discuss, Counselor Bennett? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, that's okay. No, just really briefly, this is in, this is in my word. I think this has been an ongoing interest for all of us. We've had a lot of time to work on it. I wanted to be sure to join in the compliments of you, Madam Mayor, for this one-time opportunity. I think it's absolutely an apt description of what we have before us tonight, is a one-time opportunity. And for the work done by our city staff, our city manager and John Wales particularly. And then also to praise the work done by the developer in this case, they have, I think, been really reasonable in coming forward and talking with us about this kind of approach. This has been something, I think all of us who've been on the council for a few years have been hoping for, and we're finally getting a chance to accomplish this, what's been a very longstanding goal, to expand the park, to improve the access to what's going to be one of the really outstanding sites in the community, our footbridge over to Mental Island Park, to continue the, hopefully, with access through the railroad, which I understand is being worked on now, for our pedestrian trail to continue on down, creating miles and miles of continuous walking and bicycling from the eastern edge of downtown all the way through to West Salem, down to Homestead Road. I mean, this is really a remarkable opportunity. I'm really excited about it. It will have tremendous impact as this goes forward and the other pieces of this project are put... are put together, as we meet our obligation and the developers meet theirs, to have a tremendous impact on downtown Salem and its vitality. This site being undeveloped is a drag. Developed, the sky's the limit. I think this is just such a great opportunity. I really, again, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment along those lines, but a little different in that I recognize, not just in Salem and in Oregon, but across the nation, that recreation and natural resources are being valued and recognized as economic engines as well as really the heart of building healthier cities. And I firmly believe that by enlarging Riverfront Park, by acquiring this piece of property, which will be the real gateway from Riverfront Park and downtown across to Mental Brown Island, across this wonderful bridge that's going to be built, it's going to be a signature development along the river. And so I firmly support the purchase of this property. Thank you. Now, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the purchase signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
We now are moving to item 5B, and again, we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. I'm Clint Dameron, Real Property Services Manager with the Urban Development Department. And I'm here to give you an overview of the multiple unit housing tax incentive program, or the MUTIP, as we call it, as well as the specifics on this, these two applications and the details. The MUTIP is authorized by both the Oregon Revised Statutes and the SRC, and its general purpose is to stimulate the construction of transit-supportive, multiple-unit housing in core areas of Oregon's urban centers. What does the program do? It provides a tax exemption for up to 10 consecutive years on real property taxes. It should be noted that with the city's vote today, they are only exempting the city's portion of the tax levy, and that's roughly a 30% of a total tax levy for all of Marion County and associated jurisdictions. It also only applies to the residential and related improvements of the project. It does not apply to, for instance, the 15,000 square feet of commercial space. The applicant has also requested full exemption from the all-property taxes. What that requires is city staff at, with direction, getting approval from other taxing districts that represent 51% of the total levy to vote that into existence to exempt all property taxes for 10 years. What are the program requirements for MUTIP? They're basically boiled down to four things. The project must include at least two dwelling units. It must be located within the defined core area. It must include at least one of the 19 listed public benefits, and it must be complete by January 1, 2022. So getting to the actual Pringle Square apartment development, as mentioned earlier, it's the existing Boise Cascade Warehouse, shown here on Commercial Street, on the south block. And again, as Mr. Wales pointed out, it's in two phases. Phase one is the darker yellow and phase two is the lighter yellow. Phase one consists of 115 apartments, 15,000 square feet of commercial space, which is broken into 2,800 square feet of retail and just over 12,000 feet of office. Phase two will be on the existing warehouse footprint also and includes 60 apartments. The developer has acknowledged that they plan to start vertical construction of phase one this spring, followed by phase two, potentially in two years after that. Both phases will take approximately 12 to 18 months to complete. The question is obviously begged, is, you know, what is the opportunity cost presented by these exemptions? I represent here what the city portion is and what all taxing jurisdictions are. So for phase one, the city would be foregoing $60,000 a year. For phase one, $20,000 for phase two. The roll-up, the all districts, would be $205,000 for phase one and $95,000 for phase two. And you could extrapolate that out for 10 years with a little bit of increase to see what the total cost would be. So that leads us to the next question of, in year 11, when these projects do come back on the tax rolls, what's, what is the take to the city going to be? In the first year after the exemption expires, the city will realize $103,000 in taxes on phase one and $48,000 on phase two. The full levy for all districts would be $350,000 for phase one and about $165,000 for phase two. Again, that leads us to our next question. What is the property paying now? The south block property, the warehouse, currently generates for all districts only about $25,700 in tax income this year. It should also be noted, while I use the term "city portion," this property is within an urban renewal area, so the city does not collect these taxes. It rolls into urban renewal area. So it's the urban renewal area that is basically foregoing its 10 years of taxes, not so much the city, as the base has been frozen since the creation of the urban renewal area. So in conclusion, the applications for phase one and two do meet all the requirements. They include 115 and 160 units respectively. They are located within the core area. They meet nine of the 19 listed benefits, and they will be complete by 2022. Completion dates are planned as 2015 and 2017 respectively. With that being said, staff recommends approval of both applications for the participation in the MUTIP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by councillors? Councillor Tesler? And then, Councillor Tesler and then Councillor Dickey. All right, Councillor Dickey and then Councillor Tesler.
Thank you for explaining that. I just, a quick question, well, actually, two questions. One, what would happen if the construction wasn't completed by 2022?
Then it would not qualify for the MUTIP, and I would probably defer to the city attorney on what would happen.
They just wouldn't be eligible for the tax incentive at that point.
Okay. And then, the other question is, so can you explain, because this is an urban renewal area, you showed if it was a full exemption, are other taxing districts collecting property taxes from this area right now because it's urban renewal?
They are collecting up to the level of the frozen base when the URA was established. Everything since that time is going to the URA. So what it boils down to is, in effect, the only entity taking a hit on this would be the URA itself, not any of the other districts.
All right, thanks.
Councillor Tesler.
Thank you. Clinton, could you go over the part again about, I've had a couple of emails from people who are concerned about having apartments that are able for people, regular people to live in. Within, are there any requirements that they have to be a certain percentage of income? Or are there some units that are gonna, I'm not quite, I'm still kind of fuzzy on how this works for that?
One of the benefits they could claim is a broad mix of ranges acceptable, affordable to a large portion of the community. They did not list that as one of their public benefits as being listed. They do note in the application, you can see, the rents would be somewhere over $700 to $1,500, depending on the type of unit. So there is quite a variety with a different type of unit mix, but there are no strictly affordable units meeting affordability guidelines.
And this is, I apologize for that. Is 700 or $1,500 within the range of, I mean, I'm living in the same shack I've been living in a while. I have no idea what rents are now. Is that about the range of reasonable rent that you would expect to pay in your experience?
(laughing).
Well, I mean, not your personal.
Based on, based on the, there's an attachment in the staff report, an economic benefit analysis, and it is on the higher side of average, but it is within market conditions. You know, it's a new product. It's downtown, so there, you know, there's cost to building a development like this, but they are within the, you know, acceptable market range, lack of a better term.
Okay, thank you, Clinton. I appreciate that.
Are there further questions of staff? All right. Councillor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the council approve eligibility of the Pringle Square Apartments to participate in the City of Salem Multiple Unit Housing Tax Incentive Program.
Second.
Yes.
The second part of the recommendation was to direct staff to talk to the taxing districts. As stated in the staff report, there's two parts of the recommendation.
Okay. Direct staff to make a request of boards of other taxing districts to adopt a resolution agreeing with the policy of providing a tax exemption for the property and therefore exempting the property's full property tax liability.
All right.
I thought you'd have done that anyway.
Thank you. (laughing).
Never happened.
All right. Councillor Bennett moved. Was there a second? Seconded by Councillor Thomas. Thank you. And is there discussion? Councillor Bennett, then Councillor Tesler, and then myself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This project, if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, triples the number of core area housing units.
John Wales, Urban Development. It nearly does, yes. It's a big, the council, as we know, has had a goal to increase housing in the downtown for many years. The number of housing units is just under 100. This would add another 160, 175 to the housing mix. So it's nearly, nearly triples.
Well, that alone, just beginning to really get ahead of that goal of meeting those downtown housing aspirations, which is what they have been for years and years. My predecessor, Councillor Quillan, and at the time, I'm sure, recalls the various times that during her period, and I'm sure her predecessor's period, calling for downtown housing. And this takes us so far down the road, it is such, to me, an appropriate, almost a perfect use of the Urban Renewal Agency's mission, which is to cause economic development, housing development, commercial development, job creation downtown. One of the gentlemen who spoke talked about the number of jobs being created, associated with this, 190 permanent, something like 300 or so construction jobs. This just seems like the perfect investment for an urban renewal agency, and to be able to do it this way is just very exciting. This is, this is coming together, Mr. Wales, so well. I can't tell you how pleased, I'm sure, myself and the constituency I represent in the downtown is over this project. This is going to make an enormous difference in terms of what downtown's all about. So I really urge, Councillor, this is a real winner. This is the real deal here.
Councillor Tesler.
Thank you. I've voted no on this before, and I just wanted to kind of talk about that a little bit because I usually don't flip votes, and I'm pretty much sticking to that, you know, have, usually stick to my path. But the more I thought about this and the more that I talked to people about this, it became apparent to me that people do want to live downtown, you know? They really want to live downtown. They, I have a friend, a very good friend, who really is getting older and doesn't want to really do the yard and live in a house, and this is a great opportunity for her to live in a vibrant place where she can walk around, she doesn't have to drive. There's a lot of students. I talked to people I work with, and people were like, this is a place I would live. This is a place I would live. It's close to the river, there's going to be pedestrian bridge over to Mental Brown. You can have access to 1,200 acres of natural area plus two other parks. I mean, this is premier place to live. And so I'm going to support this, and I really do think, after further analysis, that it is the perfect storm of urban renewal money, you know? And it's exactly what this was intended to do. And I remember in 2005, when the people came that did the National Aid Study, you know, I'm talking about?
Oh, right. Urban Aid Institute.
Remember them? And I remember sitting there, and this is exactly almost the same picture that they showed at their, and they talked about these very same issues, downtown housing, what should we do with this site? How can it be redeveloped? And finally, it happens. And so I'm really glad that people were able to work together and pull this through because this is something that we need in the community, and I'm going to support this. I think this is worthy of supporting this time.
Thank you. Councillor Benard.
Thank you. I received several emails that had expressed concern about vacant units that are existing in downtown Salem. I was wondering, since we do have a tabulation of the number of units in the downtown area, the mix between condos, which are owner-occupied, generally speaking, but they're owned by somebody, and apartment units, do we have a count on how many of either we have and then the vacancy rate for either of those two categories?
I'm sure we can get that. We don't have many condo units that are occupied in the downtown. Most of the, most of the housing is rental. I can tell you on the properties that we've been involved with, there are waiting lists. Those properties turn over, they're short, the vacancies are very, very short.
As rental units?
Yes. I do know that 295 Church is, condos are starting to resell and sell at higher price, but I can get that information. I just don't happen to have it right on.
My concern is the visibility of a certain building facing the park that is mostly vacant at this point, but those are condos for a different reason. And the other side of that would be the Meridian, which was intended as condos, is now, as I understand, quite a bit of it is rented out.
That's correct.
I want to make sure if something's built is occupied, is what I'm getting down to. If we're going to allow a tax credit for, or not tax credit, excuse me, tax abatement for that period of time, I want to make sure that it's going someplace that people are going to use. So vacancy rates mean a lot to me in that respect.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Well, one thing that I can, I can mention that as we've talked with the developers, they've gone through this, they've given this a lot of thought as to who could occupy. When you think of the location of these units and their proximity to the employment centers, the large employment centers in Salem, the state of Oregon on the Capitol Mall, 5,000 employees, the Willamette University, the hospital, all within walking distance through, a very nice walk, actually, along Pringle Creek, the city, the county, this is within walking distance of the city's largest employers. So it's really, as you were saying earlier, is a good location.
I'd like to add a comment regarding that and then my own personal statement. But in my discussions, I run into owners of downtown apartment buildings, and they tell me they have waiting lists, sometimes waiting lists that go for months and months and months. And if they could, they would have built more apartments because there's no lack of renters. Certainly also, the strong showing at 295 Church Street with the recent resale on three condos that sold at the asking price or higher in a very short period of time, I think, speaks to the strong market that there is for condos as well. And we're all looking at those condos at 295 Church, or excuse me, on Riverfront, and it's just simply a different situation with a combination of unfortunate circumstances that leaves that still the way it is. My personal statement about this project and why I am supporting the MUTIP when I did not a few months ago is because I firmly believe now that we have a project that is right for the site, it's right for the community, and it's right for the time. I believe that the people who will be living and working at this site are, will have one foot in downtown, and they're going to have their other foot firmly planted in the richest urban recreation and natural resource area. This plan represents a new vision for redevelopment of Salem's Riverfront, and it's going to be a template for urban development in Salem and elsewhere for decades to come. The private and public partnership that this, that this project represents is a perfect example of the collaboration capital at its best. The developer's taken the risks and made a huge investment on this site. It's totally fitting that the city of Salem should provide the tax incentives that make these types of projects pencil out, and that's why I wholeheartedly am supporting this request by the developer tonight. Are there other comments from councillors? All right. We'll move for the motion. Before us is to grant the request for the MUTIP. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, we will... And now we will entertain 5C, and again, we have a staff presentation on that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Bechtel. I'm the Parks and Transportation Services Manager for Salem Public Works, and I'm the third part of your presentation and issues tonight. And the issue we bring before you is council consideration, Resolution Number 2014-1, which is an amendment to the Park System Development Charges Eligible Project List, which will allow us to add the expansion and improvements to Riverfront Park. Or in essence, what we're doing is making the use of Park's SDC funds legally eligible for acquisition and improvement for Riverfront Park. Just very quickly, a little bit about Riverfront Park. It is Salem's premier event park. It is 23 acres currently that we use for a variety of events and has a variety of amenities at it. And an area that has been conspicuously missing for many years has been the part that's proposed for acquisition, which is 3.8 acres. Acquisition of this property literally completes the park and widens out an area that was considerably narrow, and it's also an area that, of course, will see the construction of the future pedestrian bridge, as well as connections, future connections eastward across Commercial Street. In order to use Park's SDC funds, we must go through a process of making it eligible. The first step is for Riverfront Park to be classified in an appropriate classification that was done in May of 2013, when Riverfront Park was classified as an urban park in the Comprehensive Park System Master Plan. The next two criteria are based on growth and capacity. In order to use SDC funds, you must demonstrate that there is growth impacting the park system and that there is capacity needs for that particular park. Clearly, demands have been growing on Riverfront Park over the years. The growth in number and size of events has been considerable. I looked at the event reservation list this evening, and as of this week, we have 45 events already reserved and scheduled for this calendar year. Many of those are multiple-day events, and so you're talking a considerable demand on the park, plus the everyday use that you see as well. Another increase in demand is what we call the interpark or interpark connectivity, which is runs, walks, bicycle, or, you know, events, which really makes Riverfront Park an increasing hub of activity. The City of Salem has grown since 1996, when the park first opened, and it will continue to grow as a community. Therefore, we need additional capacity, both in acreage and amenities for the park. We need more room for events. We need more restrooms, a larger playground, walkways. We need more parking, especially in the South Lot, and more connections and trails. So we meet the criteria of both growth and capacity, and so therefore, in order to use SDC funds, we would amend the Park's SDC eligible project list to include these expansions in the list. As far as eligibility, each park is, has a percentage of eligibility assigned to it, and that's based on the amount of residential land available for development within its service area. An urban park serves the entire community of Salem, so all of the residential land yet to be developed within the city limits is considered the service area for the park. It's been determined that's equal to 16%, so the park is 16% eligible for the use of Park's SDC funds. What is proposed is, of course, acquisition of the park itself, and then the types of amenities that could go in this area are really up for future determination. One of the things we would need to do is to update the master plan for Riverfront Park so that we can determine all the different kinds of uses and amenities that we would use for the additional acreage. There's been considerable interest in extending the parking from the South Lot near the carousel. We have considerable interest in pathways, connections to the connection here, going underneath the railroad, along the daylight area of the creek, underneath Commercial Street Bridge, and into the Civic Center campus. We need the event space. We may want to consider keeping some of it in Meadow, but that'll all be determined when we go through the Riverfront Park Master Plan update. As far as the expenditure plan or the project plan for the park, I want to stress the fact that what we do is we determine, when it comes to methodology, we determine the total cost of expected improvements to the park. So in this case, acquisition, planning, and improvements would be equal to just under $17.2 million, of which 16% of that is eligible for SDCs, and 84% of it would be, have to be paid for with non-SDC funds. They could be grants, they could be donations, they could be general funds, they could be general obligation funds, it could be urban renewal funds, it could be an array of funding sources. We want to be very clear that the three areas of expenditure that we are proposing to use SDCs is the acquisition of the additional 3.8 acres, including the due diligence costs and the transaction costs, the update of the Riverfront Park Master Plan, and then site improvements to make that acreage usable as a park. So as I showed you before, this, you know, the artist's rendering is kind of a meadow. We would want to at least make the park area usable with turf, grass, irrigation, possibly some trees, some pathways, in order to make it usable. There's other improvements that we know are needed in the park, and we include, of course, the pedestrian bridge across to Minto Brown, or to Minto Island. That is also an expansion of the Park's amenities, and the funding for the bridge is part of the non-SDC portion of the park. I would draw your attention to the supplemental staff report that was included in the additions package, where we added a clarification to Table 2 of your main staff report and substitute a new Table 2, so that clarifies that the use of Park's SDCs will be limited to the 16% of the total park cost capped at $2.75 million, and it'll be used expressly for the three areas of improvement that you see here on this slide. Finally, as far as availability of SDC funds, in the current adopted budget for fiscal year 1314, we have just over $1.4 million committed to projects. We have just over $3.6 million in unspecified park improvement funds that are appropriated, and this is the line item that we would draw the money from for acquisition. And then there's an amount of unappropriated funds that are not available in this fiscal year that reflect additional revenue that we have received into the fund that was not budgeted. So there is sufficient funding available for the acquisition. There is sufficient funding available for the master plan update, as well as those site improvements. We would propose putting the $100,000 for the master plan, the $500,000 for the improvements in the FY 1415 budget, and that the acquisition be considered a mid-year project in the current year budget. And with that, just to remind you that the Parks Board voted to approve these acquisitions and the entire proposal, and would be available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bechtel. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, and thank you for that explanation. That was really helpful. I've had a couple of questions from constituents about, you know, we have this many dollars in our Park's SDCs, we don't have a park in our neighborhood. Could you just explain why, like, say, in an established neighborhood where there might be a bare piece of ground that could be used as a park, why SDCs would not possibly be eligible to maybe build those neighborhood parks or acquire properties?
Well, actually, Park's SDCs would be available to purchase new park property if it's related to growth. It would be available to do amenities in parks and master planning for new parks. So if it's identified in the Comprehensive Park System Master Plan as an area in need of a park, as we acquire those properties, as opportunities present themselves, we can use those Park's SDCs to do that acquisition, to do the master planning, and then do amenities. Under the current methodology that we have today, it's based on the service area of that park. So if you're talking a neighborhood park, there's a service area that's determined, and then the amount of land, residential land that's developed is subtracted from growth, and the remaining area that's undeveloped is considered the percentage of eligibility, and that's the amount of SDCs that can be used to develop the park. So it's really, under our current methodology, it's a very site-specific application of mathematics to determine what we can do. So I guess the short answer is, it depends on that particular park.
Yes, certainly.
So just to follow up, thank you. In an area, say, in more our core area of the city where there's no more room for growth, say, that would be a little bit less likely that there would be SDCs as opposed to maybe other areas where there's potential for growth at a future time? Is that?
If it's an established park that we do not see the ability to expand, or we can't demonstrate that there's an increased demand due to the growth in the community, or we can't demonstrate that there's a need for additional capacity, then that, really, that park property is not eligible for SDCs.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benard.
Real quick question, maybe I missed this. So if this is in an urban renewal district, why aren't urban renewal dollars being used rather than system development charges?
Well, I'd have to defer the, as far as acquisition, I would have to defer to the Urban Renewal Agency staff.
John Wales, Urban Development. The Park Parcel is in the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area.
It has no money.
And that doesn't have the tax increment or the bonding capacity to acquire this property.
It's so close to the downtown urban renewal district, you think it was in it, but it's not.
It's in a different.
Which has no money.
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, any further questions of staff? All right, do we have a motion, Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move, the council amend the Park System Development Charge Eligible Project List to include expansion of Riverfront Park.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Thomas to amend the Park's master plan, the Riverfront Park master plan, so it's to be eligible for purchase...
Project list to include.
...for project.
There you go.
Funds from SDCs. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I do want to underscore again Mr. Bechtel's report to us that this has been in front of the Parks Board. They agreed with addition of the, of this to the park as well, the purchase, as well as this funding mechanism, which I really appreciate that that was done. And I'll just make another point. My predecessor, former Counselor Quillan, and made the motion in both cases. Aside from testifying, she's really on duty tonight.
She is. Thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Thomas to, isn't that right? All right, to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the items that we were addressing under Special Order of Business at this point, and I'd like to call for recess, so people can have a chance to adjust or leave as need.
I can leave?
We will resume this evening's city council meeting for Monday, January, I think it's We're now going to proceed to the section of our agenda for public hearings, which is item four. We are at deliberation point on ordinance bill number 2413. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion regarding this item?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move to continue deliberations to February 24 and hold the record open for written testimony to February 14 at 5:00 p.m.
Fine, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to leave, to continue these deliberations until February 24. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff, and I think this, is this an okay time to ask that question about this? Just to follow up on a question that I asked last week about what our neighboring jurisdictions allow, and I had sent a follow-up question last week regarding, you know, what does Marion County allow, what does Polk County allow, what are, you know, what's their current wireless ordinance? And then found out Polk County does allow some wireless towers in residential areas with some specific criteria. Marion County doesn't allow it at all. And so I guess what I want to ask is, I'd like to just have some idea of the impact that might have on our new proposal would have, because I represent an area that has a lot of unincorporated, I don't represent this area, but my area has a lot of unincorporated Marion County in it, and there's a lot of residential. So I think there's probably a higher likelihood that we could end up with the tower, you know, in the neighborhood, because maybe there's no commercial area around, which is fine. I know we need to really take a look at this, but I'm wondering then, would they all end up inside the city limits and be serving people outside of the city limits, just because we would allow it and Marion County doesn't? So I'm just wondering if we can get some idea of the impact of that.
That may be something that we need to bring back.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't.
Is that true? I don't know if you're ready to respond.
Well, if I may, Glenn Gross, interim Community Development Director, I believe we can give you a response tonight, but if you want more information, we can also bring back some information. So if I could, and I'll turn it over to Pam Cole here in just a second, but the short answer is, we don't think it's going to be a problem. Hasn't been a problem. That situation exists today, and it really hasn't, we haven't seen demand to push into our residential areas because cell towers aren't allowed in the county's residential areas. And I think the reason for that is the county is fairly liberal in what they allow in their non-residential zones for cell towers. And if you go down Lancaster, you'll see very large towers that are in commercial areas that are serving the area so far pretty adequately. It's important to know that in the county, for many of their commercial zones, there are no height limits, and there is no setback to any degree. It's three-to-five-foot setback for our cell towers, whereas in the city, under today's code, as you know, there's a 300-foot setback, even if you're in a commercial zone, a 300-foot setback from the residential area, and of course, height limits generally around 70 feet. Our proposal is to reduce that setback to 30 feet, retain the height limit, and have design standards to camouflage the towers when appropriate. None of that is written in code for the county. So, and Pamela, did you want to add to that?
I didn't really have any much. We discussed this earlier today, so Glenn has a pretty good feel for the information that I've been able to put together. And as he mentions, the way that they're allowed, they aren't allowed in residential zones, but there are some non-residential zones where they're permitted by right, and there are other non-residential zones where they're conditional uses. And where they are allowed, they're exempt from the height limits that are otherwise applicable to structures in the zone. Especially the ones that are permitted in those zones, this minimal site and rear setbacks are three to five feet, and they have to have a site obscuring fence. So the standards are much less restrictive than what we have. So far, we haven't seen this as a problem, and even with the proposed changes to the code, we don't think that it would be much of a problem. And remember that we do have, within 300 feet of residential zones, we have height limitations that are like those in the residential zones. So they're 50 to 70 feet, and if we had the current codes, they could be much higher in Marion County. So I think our standards are quite a bit more restrictive, even with the proposed amendments. Plus, we have public hearing process for all the new towers, and also, we would be requiring the camouflage or the stealth design in residential zones and within 300 feet of them. Those are things that aren't mandatory with the county standards. Plus, we'd have the opportunity to get third-party review for cases that are in residential zones, and also, they still have to document that that's the least intrusive means of fulfilling a significant gap in coverage. So there are still pretty strong protections with the proposed amendments.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, and thanks for that.
Thank you. And thanks for that explanation. That actually makes me feel a lot better. That makes a lot of sense. Just curious, do we get notified when the county allows a cell tower in an area? So like, if one came into my neighborhood somewhere that was not residential or something, would we know about that?
They do notify us of proposals within the UGB.
Okay.
Typically.
For the conditional uses, yes.
Yes. If they're permitted, then we don't get a review, but the conditional uses, which typically are in the zones that are close to our residential zones, we do get a chance to comment on those.
And usually, our comment would be, if it's a conditional use, our comment would be, if we're in the city, these are the standards we would apply in the city, hoping that that's considered to be included in their conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I asked staff to put together some figures in a table that they provided to me, and I wanted to just say that I, I don't want staff to think that, I don't think that they tried to do a good job and all that kind of stuff. But we need to look at this table, because this table basically summarizes the cellphone setbacks and other regulations in several other communities, including Eugene. And so, just for the purpose of discussion, I think we should look at Eugene, because Eugene is close in size, okay, just for that. There's also Beaverton and Corvallis. But they really talk about 300 feet to 100 feet, and also relating the setback to the tower height. Okay? So I think I would like to encourage staff to maybe think about something where we can possibly have a happy medium, where we think about tower height, or we think about these other setbacks in other communities, and why these setbacks were, you know, proposed, or those, you know, type of things. Because these, these setbacks are really tight right now. I'm okay that I can't get real good self-perception in my house. That's okay. I can go outside. And I, I think that I don't want to put these cell towers in neighborhoods where they just become an encumbrance. They become, pretty soon, they're everywhere, and they tend to proliferate, and they tend to proliferate in certain areas. And they're not a good addition in a neighborhood. And I'm still not convinced that there's not anything that could be bad health-wise from a cell tower. And I know that the staff can't talk about that, and that's FCC regulation and all that, but we really do need to consider those factors. And if nothing else, it really is not a good aesthetic value in a neighborhood. It just is not. And they can look like a tree, but eh, you know. So I, I would just like staff to maybe consider some of the figures on the table, look at tower height. Let's see if we can craft something that's a happy medium here.
All right. Are there other counselors with questions or comments? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. FCC is kind of driving a lot of the things that we have to do. There's some new rules out for comment, and the deadline to actually provide comment is February 3rd. Are we actually submitting anything?
Yes, I'm working on those. I've talked with Katrina Brown in legal, and also with Kristy Worster in the city manager's office, and we're preparing a plan of attack. So what we're trying to do is to encourage the FCC to maintain local jurisdiction, especially over the aesthetics, and try to make sure that what we're gaining from increased broadband deployment through the streamlining processes that are the subject for the rulemaking, we're not losing local authority. So we want to make sure that the, the facilities that are considered exempt from local siting permits, in our case, from this chapter, the ones that qualify for the exemptions, we want to make sure that we're using the right definitions that don't make that an overly broad exemption. What we've tried to do in our code amendment is follow what the FCC guidelines for implementation talked about back in January of 2013, and we just have one exception where we thought that they were overly broad. So they have a definition of substantial change in dimensions. And it's fine, they talk about 10% height increases, possibly 20 feet height increases. And what we wanted to do through the engrossed ordinance is add a couple of phrases there that would allow us to take a look at the proposal and make sure that they're providing some substantial evidence if they're proposing anything more than 10% or more than 20 feet. So we have a reason, and it's related to the interference that would be caused if the antenna are placed too close together. We're also saying that it wouldn't be exempt from the siting permits unless whatever is proposed for the co-location would meet the same design standards as the original facility. So what we want to do is make sure that if we've gone through the trouble through a process, whatever type of process we've been through to say what color it needs to be, what type of paint they need to use, if they need to have camouflage or stealth standards, that when we have a co-location come back, that it meets those two. And we don't end up with antenna that are too large, antenna that aren't the right color, antenna that don't have the camouflage. So that, that's the change that we made to the exemption section.
Yeah, because there's, there's several items of concern inside of that one with that, what's substantial and what's not. And then the next time they come in, you can't look at the original. Is it substantial compared to what's there now? So you could just keep piecemealing it up and up and up and up and up, and then their definitions on co-location are awful. It could be my chimney. Anything that you could strap a, an antenna onto could be considered a tower, and as such, the FCC could become a significant zoning element inside of our cities as well, so.
Well, Counselor Nanki, I'm glad you bring up this rulemaking, because the reason that's happening is the industry is telling the FCC that local government across the nation, not Salem particularly, but across the nation, are preventing the deployment of wireless facilities in a way to serve their customers. And they're getting, they're, you know, they're getting some attention. And so while we have tried to draft the ordinance, as Pamela said, more or less consistent with the guidance that's coming out, we have put in there what we think are some safeguards to ensure that if, if we have an existing facility that was approved with camouflaging or height restrictions or whatever, that, that'll still maintain, even, even with the, the, you know, the guidance and the provisions we're putting in this ordinance. So again, what we're talking about is that balancing between what the providers are saying they need to deploy and what we think we need to do to protect our residential areas.
And I did intend your point about the 10% one time, that's going to be one of my major points, is we don't allow it once then another. So you keep continually adding infinitum. We don't want that. And we also want to preserve the ability to have review in historic zones, even with the small cell distributed antenna systems. That's another section, it's not related to 6409, but it talks about expanding that and making those not as, not applicable to historic review. We don't want that to happen either. We want to maintain all of our historic abilities, the abilities to look at the historic sites to even a higher standard.
The main piece in that, if I may, is just that we keep giving away our ability to control our own cities to an ever-increasing federal government, when we could just as easily, city of Salem, we have people who use those nice smartphones, and they're not going to let us not let them have service either. So there's a balancing act that can take place locally, rather than having things rammed down our throat from multiple upper layers of government to take away our ability to choose what kind of a community we have, where we can cite things. So, I always just like to throw that out there.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there further comments or questions, questions of staff or comments? All right, I believe we have a motion on the floor, and the motion by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor...
Tesler.
Tesler, thank you, was to...
Continue deliber-
To continue the motion, to continue the deliberations until February 24th. All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our second item under public hearings is another deliberation on ordinance bill number 3113. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to continue deliberations to March 24th and hold the record open to written testimony until March 14th at 5:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to continue the deliberations until March 24th and to hold the record open until March, did you say 31st?
24th. Hold the, oh, hold the record open until the 24th, written testimony to close March 14th at 5:00.
March 14th, thank you. All right. Is there discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Benars, there is discussion.
I know we voted on the previous one, and here we are on another delay. I'm just asking, why the delay?
Mad-
Yes, Counselor Bennett, or-
Go ahead.
-city attorney?
The continuation of deliberations to give staff an opportunity to address issues with the ordinance to make sure it, it complies with state regulations, as well as the other aspects of the zone code.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is order number 2000, excuse me, order 201401 VHD. And is there a staff report with this, or do we move straight to a motion?
For item C and D, you're just adopting the order, so there's no staff presentation.
All right. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
All right, Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Nanki, to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And item D, same thing, order number 2014-02VHA. And Counselor Bennett, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Dickey, to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion, oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries with a no vote by Counselor Nanki. Thank you. We will now go back to special orders of business. We have item 3.3A with, I believe, a motion from Counselor Tesler.
Okay, back to this point.
This is it.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is discussion. I hope that when I leave, you find people on this council at the end of the year, that you will never, ever approve a property like this again for development. Because this is an example of what we need to move away from. And I am very, very happy to say that I think that in the past eight years that I've been here, you have had a vision of where not to build, and where to build, and where there's going to be issues. This site is going to be a lot of issues. The site is right on Pringle Creek. It's going to flood. It's in a flood plain. The Giggle Miss Brewery is right across from the creek. They have outside events. They have people that sit outside on the patio. They show films at night. This little teeny site is going to have 13 houses put on it. 13 houses. Little tiny lots with all impervious surface, so it can all run off into the creek, and they're not going to preserve any of the vegetation along the creek. Measure five has been trampled out the window on this one. This is not a good example for us. Please promise me, if nothing else, that think about this kind of development in the future. 10 years ago, it was suggested we buy this property for a linear park. We should have done that. We should have done that. This is going to be a problem. People are not going to be happy. They're going to be unhappy because of the noise, and then they're going to be unhappy when they get flooded out. And I'm really disappointed that this went through a long time ago. This is not anybody's fault. Well, your fault, because you were here. But I just, just do me a favor and drive, drive by this address sometime and take a look. Take a look, and, and think, and think if that was a good thing to do. And it took me a while to figure out if this was Ward 2 or Ward 3. So it is Ward 2. But that's all I want to say. And I'm really glad that at least we're going to buy one piece of it, because we needed to do that. So, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Boy, I sure couldn't agree with you more. That is not what we're voting on tonight. I want to make that very clear, because I, I think you made a very good point about a long-term issue. But tonight, we're voting on purchasing one lot in this area for a pump station that is needed in this area. So while I agree with you wholeheartedly in terms of your concerns for this property and all that, it is long, long, long past and long decided. This is really trying to make sure that we complete part of a public works project in the area, and this, this lot happens to be available. So as you, you know, as we vote yes on this, hopefully, it will be understood by anyone taking a look at this, that we're not voting to create a flooded subdivision with a really bad location across from a bar.
Drinking beer or buying-
Watching movies.
Yeah.
But otherwise, actually, Tesler's right on the long-term issue.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just a quick question. How noisier will those pumps be that we're going to add on?
Thank you, Counselor Nanki. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The Edwards Pump Station already exists. Our pump stations are enclosed, so while they may make noise, we've never had a noise complaint from any citizens. The acquisition of Lot 13 is actually a twofold acquisition. One, it gives us the opportunity to expand the pump station in the future. And just as importantly, if you look at the very back page, Exhibit D, you see that our main water lines coming into the city go right through that parcel. So it's a, it's a great acquisition for us. And who knows, maybe someday we'll acquire Lot 12, too, or something. You know, but, but for now, that's all we can afford is Lot 13. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
To build a flooded.
Let's see, where are we? I think we're at 5B?
Oh, it's awful.
All right.
It was.
Use this for a mic.
The next item that I want to draw to your attention under the special orders of business is the management report to be presented by public works staff. And I believe that it's momentarily on the screen. Oh, no. Oh, am I wrong?
Yeah.
No, that's right.
We already did that. So we, that's okay. That's all right. I need all help I can get. I don't turn, I don't turn any down. Turn it away. So we do have a management report. And I did recognize that we have a staff person at the microphone. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Brian Martin. I work in the engineering division with the Public Works Department. And I'm here tonight to present an update on the 2008 Streets and Bridges General Application Bond. I have good news, because things have gone very well. A little background to get things started, of course, $99.8 million were voted on and approved by Salem voters back in 2008 for street and bridge projects. There basically were three categories. There was congestion relief projects, rebuilding and maintaining pavements and bridges, and then safety improvement projects. This next slide, I wanted to point out some of the positive things here. The impact of the bond savings and the bond premiums. So as you've heard in previous presentations, we did receive 4.8 million dollars in bond premiums through the good bond sales. You add that to the original program, which had 99.8 million, and a revised program jumps up to 104.6 million dollars to use on projects. projects. So with that and about eleven and a half million dollars which were project savings from the original project list, we're able to complete sixty-two projects now versus the original forty-one that were included in the original bond sale. So with that little bit of money and the bond savings, it's a fifty percent increase in the number of projects that we're doing. The original program was scheduled to be complete by two thousand and fifteen. With the new projects that we're starting now from the bond savings, it'll take us to two thousand and twenty. Another positive note here is the money that's working in our community. So we have spent about sixty-five million dollars to date and a fifty-two point nine million have gone to design and construction contracts. And out of that fifty-two point nine million, ninety-two percent has gone to firms in Marion and Polk Counties, to the tune of forty-eight point five million. I guess without getting into a lot more detail on the numbers, I think the best thing to do to show the progress is show you some pictures of projects that we've completed to date. So I've got quite a few. I'm going to go through them kind of quickly, but you can see a lot just from them themselves. So when we started out in two thousand nine, you know, basically about five, six months after the bond was approved, we really got heavy into the pavement rehabilitation projects. They didn't require right-of-way, didn't require permits, so the projects that you can hit the ground on and get done quickly. So this first picture on the left is Broadway Street. And then the one on the right is Lancaster Drive. And we took care of two places in two thousand nine. The first one, Glendale, the Sunny View. And the second place on Lancaster was down between Ricky, Ricky Street and Highway twenty-two. In addition, we took care of Seventeenth Street from Silverton Road down to Oak and Park, Tarmigan Street over in West Salem. We also installed a pedestrian safety crossing at Seventeenth Street and Shametata Street. And I kind of point out, there's a couple of ways that you deal with pedestrian safety. One is you put medians in the roadway to give them refuge when they cross. The other way is to build bulbouts to shorten the distance when they cross the streets, which you'll see some of those later. We hit two thousand and ten and we picked up a couple more big paving projects. So the first one there on the left, Commercial Street between Marion and Ferry, that was our first project downtown. At the same time, or actually shortly thereafter, we took care of Church Street. We also had one of our bigger pavement R and R projects, which was on South Commercial Street. We went from Mission all the way down to Twelfth, if you remember that. Significant amount of paving took place there. And in two thousand and ten, we did our first traffic signal modification, or actually replacement, at Seventeenth.
That's right. Why, it's great.
Into two thousand and eleven, it was our second summer paving downtown. We took care of Liberty Street, which actually followed a major water line improvement that the Urban Development Department funded, as well as High Street. And then we did more work out at Kubler Boulevard near Thirty-Sixth Street. And then this next pedestrian safety crossing, we actually did five or six of them in two thousand and eleven. This was just one I'm pointing out. It's over on Rosemount Street in West Salem. And we actually added some water quality features to the pedestrian crossing, so it kind of served a couple of purposes. We also replaced the Fairway Avenue Bridge. Not a lot of people see it down there, but if you do happen to drive in that area, you'll notice the, the new bridge and the new roadway. And then we installed our traffic monitoring cameras in our backbone, I'm sorry, interconnect system to try and connect multiple places around the city. That picture on the left of the camera, not sure if you can see it, but up in this corner here, that's where the pan tilt and zoom cameras are placed. They can rotate three hundred and sixty degrees. This one is actually at Marion Street near the bridge so that we can monitor traffic as it goes across the bridge. We're actually working with IT right now to develop how we can access these cameras on our city webpage.
Yeah, those cameras are available through o dot trip check. So if you go to o dot trip check, it shows all of the Salem cameras as well and you can go and see them and I think they refresh every two minutes.
We're still working on the refresh rate. It's a little bit slow right now.
Yeah, so, but you can, you can see the twenty locations?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one locations?
Twenty-one locations.
In Salem, so, yeah. And now we're trying to see how we can get it on a more local scale, but o dot trip check has them.
On the right's a photo of a school warning flasher sign. And due to the, the changes in technology, we replaced that entire system in two thousand and eleven with a nine hundred megahertz radio system that impacted over two hundred school warning flashers. And then we started our first pavement widening project. And, and what you'll see in these slides that come, the big widening projects that require right-of-way and permits, takes longer to deliver those projects because there's more process you have to go through to acquire the land and get them built. Kubler was our first one that we did in two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and twelve, we started the construction out here on the Commercial Street Bridge. I've got a few photos of this one because it was pretty impressive how it went up. That photo on the right there is a steel reinforcement that goes in the drilled shaft to help support the bridge. Several of those are over sixty feet, feet long, meaning they went down over sixty feet in the ground.
Wow, gosh.
In addition, we had some huge beams that we had to deliver on-site. These beams are over a hundred and eighty feet long, about seven and a half feet tall. The only way we could get them to the site was to go up Commercial Street from I five up to the bridge, which meant we had to go against one-way traffic. And we got a marvelous police escort to get those beams in place.
I think anybody would have gotten out of your way.
Yeah.
I think I would have gotten out of your way.
And then here's a picture from a couple of weeks ago. It's getting very close to being complete. In fact, over the next two weeks, we should have it fully open to traffic and then it'll be landscaping, some pavement work and bridge rails and kind of the finishing touches to bring it home, I guess.
I see its greater lines on it.
Two thousand and twelve also saw one of our more significant intersection projects. It was the year we, we completed the reconstruction out at Market Street and Lancaster Drive. And for those of you that haven't driven it, since that work has been done, you'll see how significantly it improved that intersection and access. While we were out there, we took care of a couple more pavement R and R projects, both north and south of the intersection. So now, basically, if you look at the projects two thousand and nine through two thousand and twelve on Lancaster, we replaced pavement from Center Street all the way up to Glendale. We also started our widening on Hawthorne Avenue in two thousand and twelve. And we completed the first phase, which was from Silverton Road to Felina. The picture on the left shows the improvements, which are significant from what it originally looked like. And the photo on the right I threw in, because of the water quality treatment considerations we had to put into the project, we needed space to do it. And so that space was available at North Gate Park. In exchange for the right-of-way to build some of the water quality improvements, we did a pilot impervious pavement parking lot. And happy to report that's working well today.
Yay.
Yay.
Yay. People love it.
Of course, we couldn't go on without working downtown a little bit more, so we took care of Church Street and State Street also in two thousand and twelve. That picture on the left shows the segment between Liberty and Commercial where we converted from one-way to two-way traffic.
Yay.
Yay.
And then our famous railroad safety improvement crossings. A picture on the left is at Market Street where the quiet zone is in effect. And I put the picture at Sunny View Road in on the right because as we go through Phase Two and complete improvements at Madison and Silverton Road, the improvement shown here at Sunny View and also the intersection to the south at Madison will also be included in the quiet zone. Two thousand and thirteen saw us out doing some missing sidewalks to schools and parks. The picture on the left, Weather Street is adjacent, actually where I'm standing when I took that photo was at Weathers Park. You can't see real well, but just as you go down that photo, there were sidewalks that were missing that we installed. And then on the right, Marshall Drive over by Morningside Elementary School had no sidewalks. We were able to complete the sidewalk on the east side.
Is that Chap?
Yeah, he's very happy.
I bet.
Yeah. We also finished up the Hawthorne and Highson Avenue project. So we, the Phase Two was done in two thousand and thirteen, went from Felina up to Portland Road. The intersection of Portland Road is in the photo on the left. And then the curve where Hawthorne and Highson go from one street to the other is shown on the right. If you recall, that road is just a two-lane road, no sidewalks and a lot of children. And now we got sidewalks all the way through. Here's kind of a during and after photo of Iola Drive Northwest out in West Salem. So you see the roadwork going on on the left. And when we talk about putting people to work, you can't see real well with this photo, but there were a lot of people out on that project. And this photo alone had, I think there were over five excavators all working just in that one area at one time. But it's a, it's definitely a very good before and after photo.
You know, before we leave that photo, there was a tremendous amount of cutting for this project because we were really fighting a lot of hills. And we really started to experiment with some aesthetics. So you see, I don't know, five different kinds of retaining walls out there as we started to experiment a little bit. Really doesn't cost very much. As a percentage of the overall project, it's negligible. But, you know, there's some, some retaining walls that look like exposed rock, you know, like we hit rock, but it's really just concrete. You see it out here on the bridge. So, so we're really trying to pay attention, not just to the public works aspects of it, but to the livability aspects of it. And wherever we can, and it's fun when our project managers come to visit and, you know, I got to pick out exposed rock patterns and, you know, we're looking through the catalogs and stuff. And it's, it's really a lot of fun and I hope the, the citizens appreciate that we're starting to pay attention to those kinds of things.
I've heard very, very positive comments from people over in West Salem for the project. It was a huge project, but they always seem to be talking about it with pride, like it's my street and I love hearing that. And I do think that the people working on the project helped that tremendously because traffic continued to move. There weren't serious backups. Everyone just seemed very pleased about the whole process, which is good.
Great. All right. This next photo was actually out on Market Street on our Market and Swigole Elementary Road Reconstruction Realignment Project. So that picture on the left is kind of a before and for, for a reference point, you see two little house tops over here on the left of that screen. They're the same as those two house tops right there. So you can see what a difference that project made.
You know, and I, and I want to mention here, this project was on the drawing boards for twenty years, twenty-plus years. And we started to acquire right-of-way years ago. And I, and I make the comment because as we enter the process for the third bridge, this is obviously a much smaller scale, but we put the word out in this neighborhood years ago that if they, you want, if you were in the alignment and you wanted to sell your house, we would buy your house from you. And actually, several people took us up over the years. They couldn't believe it, that they could actually just call the city and the city would buy their house. And several people took us up on it. And it was really a great situation coming in. This was a very, very difficult project. Lots of issues, lots of, of underground gas pipes that weren't mapped, that were old materials and stuff. So our project managers on this one really did a great job to, to deliver what's really the first half of the project.
The first half, that's right. So Phase One-
There's another half coming.
Right. In fact, this next, next slide on the picture on the left, that's kind of where the project ended this last summer. And if you go up that street off into the horizon, that's where Phase Two is going to occur this summer. So basically, we completed from, I'll say roughly Lancaster over to just east of Forty-Fifth Street. And this summer, we'll go from Forty-Fifth Street over to Royalty. Photo on the right, work at Glen Creek and Wallace Road here started the last couple And so additional two thousand and fourteen projects we have in the books, we're going to do Phase Three, the missing sidewalks and bike lanes to school. That'll occur at Girth Avenue out in Northwest Salem, Ellis Avenue in Northeast Salem, and on Pringle Road in South Salem. The Fairgrounds Road at Hood Street Traffic Homing Project that was approved as a bond savings project will happen this summer. We've got bridge repairs from the January two thousand and twelve flood. Two locations this summer, Fourteenth Street at Shelton Ditch and Summer Street at Mill Creek. Work in the Regional Traffic Control Center will start in February. And then the Salem Neighborhood Sidewalk Reconstruction Program will also be starting this summer.
Amazing.
Two thousand and fifteen, we'll do the last of the bridge repair projects, which is High Street at Mill Creek. We'll do the Skyline Road widening from Liberty to Kubler, our third phase of the pedestrian safety crossing improvements. We'll be doing, replacing the Winter Street Bridge over near the hospital. Iola Drive pavement rehabilitation will go from Kingwood down to Edgewater and kind of extend the, the Iola project. And then again, more sidewalk reconstruction. In two thousand and sixteen, we've got the Commercial Street at Kubler Boulevard Intersection Project slated. And now that'll be all four legs as part of the bond savings. The legs of Kubler added to the previously funded project. We'll be completing Twenty-Fifth Street at Madrona Avenue.
Yay.
And there'll be sidewalks going in at Salem Heights Elementary School. And that'll be the, the last of the sidewalk reconstruction, at least that's, that which is funded by the bond program.
Again, federal government.
Yes.
Wow.
Councilor Clem, I think, has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian, Iola, is that just pavement rehab or are we going to fix some of those?
Yeah, we're going to fix sidewalks, pavement rehab.
Okay, so we're not doing sidewalk work?
Yes.
We are?
Yes, sidewalk work.
That's part of it?
Yes.
And signal, curb sidewalk repaving and signal underconnect. Got it. All coming down the hill.
Two thousand and seventeen, we kind of, the railroad crossing is a difficult project because of all the process. You have to go through the railroad on o dot rail to get things approved. We kind of took the timelines of how the first project went and kind of worst case and show what is happening in two thousand and seventeen. We're starting on it now. If it can be done sooner, we certainly will try and get it done sooner. If, if the railroad takes all the time they can and through the process, it could fall into two thousand and seventeen, but we're, we're hoping it could be done sooner. We've got the Kubler Boulevard eastbound widening. Brown Road, which is different than what was on the staff report tonight, this is the segment that would extend from the part the county is doing next summer. So basically, this would go from San Francisco to Silverton Road. And then we've got the Court Street Pedestrian Bridge. And then this last standout one shows two thousand and twenty, which seems like a long ways away. And the only reason we have it so far out is it's primarily federally funded. And the way we see the grants coming forward, we don't think we'd get what we need until, until two thousand and twenty for construction. That's all there is. Are there any questions?
Did you ask something?
I do. I just wanted to thank Brian Martin and his project managers and your communication team. There were a lot of projects here that were good potential for a lot of public angst and negative comments. I don't think I've received three in the entire time we've been working on these Streets and Bridges projects. They've just done a wonderful job communicating with the public, keeping people informed, making sure traffic went well. On the Commercial Street Bridge replacement, I didn't have one through that entire time. So thank you, Brian, for doing such a wonderful job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may-
Yes, certainly.
Just, just a couple of quick things. One, you know, Brian introduces himself as working for the Engineering Department. Actually, Brian is our Assistant City Engineer that's in charge of this entire program. So all the project managers that are working on these projects actually, you know, report up to Brian. So he's really in charge of delivering this thing. So really, my congratulations to him and, and our staff on what a great job is being done here. I also want to recognize a couple of our partners on this thing that are unsung heroes. And one is the real estate section of Urban Development, Clint Dameron and, and John Gibson and the rest of the real estate folks. They have acquired dozens, hundreds-
Hundreds.
-of parcels. And we have yet to go to condemnation on any of them. And that is gigantic. When you see a project like Market at Lancaster, all of the parcels that had to be acquired and not one went to condemnation is really unheard of. And, and a lot of that is really the great upfront work that the real estate staff does and how we treat our citizens and our business owners with kid gloves to get through. We acquired three houses that we tore out in various projects.
Well, more than that even.
Well, plus the ones on, right.
Or Marcus Wiegel.
You know, in every case, folks were relocated. We found them homes, several of them. We got them out of being underwater because we knocked on their door and said, "It's time for you to go. There's a road coming through here." So I really can't say enough that that's really the good work of the real estate unit and the work that they've done. And they really, they're kind of the unsung heroes. When they do things great, Linda doesn't get a phone call. And when they mess up, there's a lot of, there's a lot of public hearings at the council. And we haven't, we really haven't had any. So really, my hats off to them and my great appreciation.
That's wonderful. Are any of them here right now?
I don't know. (Inaudible).
Well, another time. Okay, good, okay. Well, thank you very much. Are there questions of counselors, comments? Counselor Bennett, then Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. That was really a good report, Brian. That really was, just seeing it all put together at once was pretty amazing and the breadth of projects. What was, can you talk at all about the economic impact of this in the community? I mean, I, whatever, did 90 million or 114 or whatever, but can you talk about jobs and how much of it stayed in town, that it didn't go to, whether it went to Portland contractors, or did it stay here? Sort of, what did it do here?
So Brian had one of his early slides of the money spent to date, 92 percent stayed in Marion and Pope County. And that's construction firms and engineering firms. So I'm not, you know, I don't work in urban development, so whatever the multiplier is for that amount of money, just dozens of jobs at all levels of trades and professionals working on this thing. It's really been just a fantastic project, as well as the money invested. You know, you get somebody, you know, we got to buy temporary construction easements, and we have to buy small slivers of right-of-way. So those are little pennies from heaven that also come to those property owners that I'm sure are also, you know, those are hard to quantify, but I'm sure are also reinvested, you know, at the Home Depot or wherever property owners are going to go to then buy more stuff and do more things. So it's just been a great, great.
Yeah, I might just add that we got a lot of feedback during this whole process that a lot of companies stayed in business during the recession because of these jobs and this investment that the city kept.
That's great.
The doors opened in a lot of local businesses, which is great.
I hope at some point before this whole thing closes, this is all documented. I mean, I think it would be good to know what the impact, because it did occur during the recession. And while we watched it at the national level with mixed results, it'd be interesting to see what can happen at the local level with a well-targeted and managed program that really is aimed at maintaining an industrial, an industry almost in a region like ours. It's really a testament to the work you did and the citizens did passing the bond.
Yeah, that's really great.
Shovel ready. Shovel ready.
Counselor Tesler.
So thanks for that report. Here's what I liked hearing, "Water quality feature."
Yes.
Which is not a drinking fountain.[1056.73][1056.73](Laughter).
With a filter in it.
Seeing the bike lanes, the sidewalks, the clearly marked lanes, the escape, I call it the escape route on 17th where you can get into the middle of 17th and then continue crossing. There have been a lot of people who have been hit by cars there, I mean, and seriously injured. And that is just, you know, and the little safety crossings with the blinking yellow lights, especially the one on 12th Street.
Yeah.
You know, cheap solution to a really horrible, and we also had somebody who was almost killed, who was a constituent there. Just all of those things just are, I just, I really commend Public Works for that. That's forward-thinking. Keep doing curb cuts, keep doing little rain gardens, keep doing all that good stuff, keep doing bike lanes. I appreciate it so much. And someday, I want to see Miguel Crist on this list. But, you know, we'll see.
Let's see, Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank Public Works, Brian, and you and your crew. Iola, with the hillsides, has really had flooding problems just due to topography and Turnage Brook, a couple of creeks. And so hopefully, it looks the way it's been designed and the way it's been built, not only quality of life, better mobility, safer crossings, but really just helping with some of the flooding issues that Iola has had due to poor previous design. So really appreciative that you incorporated that in the design for a number of projects.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. That's just, it's really neat to see everything kind of in one, at one time. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, that's working really well in my neighborhood is that little tiny parking lot at North Gate Park. I mean, that was just, just a great little kind of unexpected bonus that we were able to get, and that it gets used a lot. And it's definitely been an amenity to the neighborhood. And I hear that from people all the time. So thank you for your ingenuity in putting that together. I really appreciate that. And then this Market and Swigle, I drive Swigle a lot, and that has been a really big improvement. And one of the things that I really see about that is that it takes the traffic away from the elementary school that was basically there with no sidewalk right on Swigle before. And so every time I drive by that, I think about how much safer that is for the kids. So that's been just a really great project and really excited to see the next batch of projects that are coming up and that we've been able to realize so much savings that we're able to do more than we wanted. And most of the public has gone, but thanks to the public for, you know, being willing to, you know, say, "Here you go, trust us with those funds to be able to do those projects," because I think it's really benefited the entire city.
Counselor Benars?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm probably the only ward in the city of Salem. We had, I think, sidewalks improvements that we're going to have along the way. We didn't get any special projects in our particular ward. I got in the office too late to have my hat in the rink to get some improvements. So I still want, I want, on the next bond measure, I would really love to see improvements to Browning Road would be west or, yeah, west of Liberty and Madrona up from Cruising Creek. Both those are used by children and anyway, in transportation, both of them are dangerous. But next time, I know, next time.
Next time. But we do have Skyline coming.
Right, Skyline is coming.
That's right.
Skyline is on the way for you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, that brings up a great question because that comes up in every one of the bond committee meetings as far as, "Well, oh, this ward's not getting anything." It's like, that's not what it's really meant to do. And so staff has been great on bringing the projects that really need to be done with some level of, yeah, knowing that we have more projects and will ever be able to do to geographically spread those and get the most bang for their buck as well. And it's a real easy committee to be on because they bring us such good work. And we just kind of give them a reality check and say, "Don't say this and say a lot of this." If anything, you know, a lot of the folks in the community, many millions of which are watching tonight, would never know some of these projects are complete. I didn't know Market Swigle was done, so the next week I drove it, and it just happened to be that there was a construction crew out there, so I couldn't experience it to its fullest, but I'll do it again. But a lot of it's just tooting our own horn and letting people actually know what's out there. Because there's a lot of people who would avoid like the plague, construction areas, and then they get in the habit of staying on a different direction and not knowing when something's necessarily done. So I know that Lancaster was forbidden zone at Market for a long time for people.
And now it flows great.
Yeah, it is great. I actually went out there again finally.
After five years. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really do appreciate the report, and it's exciting to think about the work that's going to come, yet to come with the bond measures, so it's great. We have no unfinished business this evening, and I want to draw your attention to the information reports in your packet. And I believe that Counselor Nanki wanted to make a comment regarding the Council Golds update, which is item number 7B. Is that correct, Mr. Nanki, Counselor Nanki?
There was some questions I had in my notebook. One was in regards to the beer and wine thing, in regards to the development we talked about over at Edwards with the pump station type piece and how those reconcile each other. What was my other?
I think it was about Mill Creek Corporation.
Oh, there was a comment that there was going to be an annexation on Gaffin Road because we needed it for something. And that's the first I had heard of anything.
Gas and water.
That's a, that's an annexation that we would do in order to bring the Gaffin Road into the city so that it can be improved and maintained by the city. We've had some.
Just the roadway itself.
Just the roadway, yes, yes.
Because I know that I'd mentioned, I think back when Rick Scott was doing some stuff, there was a property owner who was willing to potentially sell their property or annex, you know, over time, that a couple of properties down from, no, that was the stuff downtown. I actually talked to them. So, yeah, it was mostly just to find out what we were annexing.
Well, it's because most of the length of that road is in the city, and then there's a small part that's in the county, and it just, we think it's more efficient if we were able to repair the entire road.
Well, yeah, and the county actually comes down and mows it, and I actually have landscaping it because I work down in there. They come across and with this funky thing and hit the front of our property as well. It's like, "What are you guys doing?" But, yeah, the roadway out there is very narrow. For a very short period of time, it's improved, so it would be nice to see, there's a lot of traffic.
Yes.
And it'll be very nice when the development gets that light in at Corden and Gaffin as well. There's a significant amount of people that come off Corden, make the left, so that people coming out of Gaffin can't move anywhere, so that they can get onto the freeway and hop up into the canyon as well. So a lot of improvements in that area, hopefully soon.
Great. Okay, I believe that I wanted to simply make a note that also in our packet this evening was a quarterly report on the economic development activities, update on toolbox programs, enterprise zone activity, and business retention efforts. And congratulations to the Urban Development Department staff that have worked so tirelessly, not just this quarter, but year-long, to really push those public dollars out to spur private investment. And I just encourage you to read through the list. It's pretty heartwarming when you realize that those dollars create jobs and those jobs, the dollars from those jobs turn over again and again in our community, sometimes as many as seven times. So I'm very, always very pleased to see that report in our binder. All right, we have a couple of ordinances. No, we only have one ordinance for a second reading. Would the city recorder like to introduce that? It's Ordinance 8.2, Ordinance Number 114. Ordinance Bill Number 1-14 relating to automobile racetrack licenses amending SRC 30.105. Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen is absent. Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson? Aye. Thank you. Do we have public comment this evening? Anyone signed up for public comment? We don't, all right? Moving right along, under new business, mayor's items. We do have a mayoral appointment to the Senior Center Advisory Commission, and you'll see that report right here. Monica Pacico was appointed to that. And then also, I draw your attention to the fact that we have appointments to the City Council Committee on the City Manager's Performance Evaluation. And do realize that the committee does not do the evaluation. The job of the committee at this point is simply to evaluate the form that we use and make any recommended changes to that form before we actually begin the actual process. So that's in your binder, item number 10.1B. And the people on the committee are Laura Tesler, Chuck Bennett, and Brad Nanki. But everyone on council will have a proper opportunity in the process for comment, and we'll all look forward to that. So that's in your binder. I don't see any counselor items. I don't see anything else to address, so we are adjourned. Mr. Sturba, did you want to say something?
Yes, I did.
Well, you weren't signed up.
I know, and you didn't say, "Are there any interested people?"
No, I didn't. As a matter of fact, I didn't.
Right up here it shows the city manager, 2004, still current. Did we get Linda Norris's picture up here?